I'd like to call this meeting the Prince William County School Board to order. I'm going to read the notice of electronic participation pursuant to school board policy 139. School board member participation in meetings by electronic communication. Jen Wall will, Jennifer Wall will participate remotely in this meeting by electronic communication because she is unable to attend in person due to a personal matter that she is out of state. A motion is now in order for the approval of the meeting agenda. Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the meeting and agenda.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all in favor, or any discussion? All in favor? Aye. We need a roll call on this, or no?
We do.
Ms. Wall, how do you vote? Say aye. Unmute. Unmute. Okay, I see the hand. Okay, everyone else was, Mr. Wilk was aye, Mr. Jesse aye, Mr. Blake aye, and Ms. Zargarpur aye. We're doing roll call because when we have a member out, we have to do roll call. Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Motion to enter closed session. Motion's ordered. Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that pursuant to sections 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia, the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with staff the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia. And two, to discuss with division council and staff actual or probable litigation and specific legal matters involving staff, students, and other civil litigation involving the school division under sections 2.2-3711A7 and 8 of the Code of Virginia. And three, to discuss and receive briefings by staff members related to the security of school facilities, the safety of persons using such facilities, and the actions taken to respond to such matters. Where discussion in an open meeting would jeopardize the security of such facilities pursuant to sections 2.2-3711A19 of the Code of Virginia.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call. Ms. Zargarpur, how do you vote? How do you vote, Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Jesse?
Yes.
Mr. Wilk? Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes. That passes unanimously. At this time, the Prince William County School Board will enter closed session, and we'll try to be out when we're out. At this time, the Prince William County School Board is returning to open session from closed session. I apologize for our starting late. We had a hearing that lasted, that started at 5:30 that went long and delayed the board's start to the meeting this evening, so we'll have to deal with that. We do have, I read it earlier, if someone wanted to refer to it, but there is a notice of electronic participation that was read earlier for a school board member from the Gainesville District, Jen Wall, who is participating by electronic means. So as long as she's on the meeting, the board will have roll call votes for every vote because that's the law regarding board members who participate by Zoom. Okay, we have, first up, 801, approval of appointments and releases. Mr. Blake, motion's in order. It says 801 on my thing. All right, whatever. Let's go. Approval of appointments and releases. Where is that? Oh, yeah. All right, sorry, 701. My apologies. Closed session certification. Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that pursuant to section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of October 15, 2025 be certified by adopting the following resolution. There now be it resolved, now therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such a bit, public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams?
I second.
Ms. Williams, second. Any discussion? Okay, please vote. We'll do the roll call.
Latif?
What, call the roll, Ms. Laura?
Yes. Latif?
Yes.
Blake? Jesse? Tradenic? Wall?
Yes.
Wilk? Williams?
Yes.
Zargarpur?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Move on to closed session action items now. 801, approval of appointments and releases. Mr. Blake?
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointment and releases of specific employees as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Latif?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jesse? Tradenic? Wall?
Yes.
Wilk? Williams?
Yes.
Zargarpur?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Moving on to 8.02, a motion's in order. Mr. Jesse?
Recommendation, I move that the Prince William County School Board provide written notice and case number SB 25-001 as discussed in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams?
I have a second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll. Yes.
Blake? Jesse? Tradenic?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Wilk? Williams?
No.
Zargarpur?
Yes.
The vote is six yes, two no. Williams, Blake, motion passed.
Moving on to the pledge of allegiance. At this time, we have our student representative, Karina Grover of the Colgan High School, to lead us in the pledge this evening.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to thriving futures focus. As everyone knows, thriving futures focus is an opportunity to highlight the exemplary work being accomplished in our schools that fulfill our vision that every student will graduate on time with the knowledge, skills, and habits of minds necessary to create a thriving future for themselves and their community. We dedicate this time during our meetings to recognizing students, staff members, and schools that have earned an honor or an award at the state or national level. Tonight, the board would like to recognize the six Prince William County students who were selected by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation as the 2026 National Merit Scholarship Program semifinalists. The National Merit Scholarship Corporation is a nonprofit organization that coordinates academic recognition and scholarship programs for high-achieving U.S. high school students. Since 1955, the program has promoted excellence by recognizing top-performing students and providing scholarship opportunities through partnerships with businesses and higher education institutions. Our students were selected based on their outstanding academic record along with entering the 2026 National Merit Scholarship Program by taking the 2024 preliminary SAT or the PSAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. We begin our recognition with the Coles District, Coles District, Ms. Lisa Zargarpur. Please introduce our first honorees.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. The Coles District would like to recognize two students from Charles J. Colgan Senior High School. I am proud to acknowledge Julene, wait, Julianne, sorry, Julianne Lim, representing, I apologize, representing Colgan High School tonight is Principal Dr. Tim Healy. Would you like to invite Julie, Julie, goodness, I'm looking at it two different ways, Julianne, to share a few words on this accomplishment?
Hi, I'm Julianne. I'm from Colgan High School. I'm very honored to be a National Merit semifinalist. I come from a family that really values education and achievement. So getting this award is not only a recognition of my efforts, but of the wonderful support that I've received from my family and teachers throughout the years.
Thank you. And from C.D. Hilton High School, oh, no, I'm sorry, that's you.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And Julianne, I'm very sorry too, I've said your name practically wrong twice. She can confirm why I said it like that. Okay, so thank you. I just should have read the name without the pronunciation there. From C.D. Hilton High School, I would like to acknowledge Rebecca Clark, representing Hilton High School, as Assistant Principal Mr. Brandon Moorhead, and I wish to invite Rebecca to speak on behalf of this honor.
Hi, thank you. I'm Rebecca Clark from Hilton, of course. I'd like to first and foremost thank my mother, of course. She's been there along every step, and as a single parent, you know, she plays a large role in the household. But really, to me, this is kind of recognition and reassurance. I mean, I didn't guess every question right. It wasn't a stroke of luck, but it's a testament to hard work and that paying off. And it's really different when you get the letter in the mail that shows that you did something worthwhile. So thank you.
Congratulations to you both, and I wish you both best of luck on your next steps, and I hope you will let us know what those are.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Zargarpur, and Ms. Erica Tradenic of the Brentsville District. Ms. Tradenic?
Thank you. The Brentsville District is proud to recognize two students as well. From Gainesville High School, I wish to acknowledge Benjamin Foo. Representing Gainesville High School is Assistant Principal Amy Maneval. At this time, I invite Benjamin to share a few words about this outstanding achievement.
Hi, my name is Ben Foo, and I attend the Gainesville High School and the Governor's Square Innovation Park. I'm super appreciative and honored to be named a National Merit semifinalist, and I wanted to extend my appreciation to everyone who's helped got me to where I am today. First and foremost, shout out to my parents. Their unending support has gotten me through each day. And thank you to my amazing teachers, counselors, and administrators, and other faculty and staff at both schools, Gainesville High School and the Governor's School, for helping to make my dream of being educated a reality. And finally, a big thank you to Prince William County Schools and Prince William County Schools' leadership for working to provide the resources, opportunities, and environments for every school and student to succeed. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ben. From Patriot High School, I want to acknowledge Luke Pomfret. It's my understanding that Luke has graciously opted out of speaking tonight. Representing Patriot High School tonight is Principal David Van Gelder. Congratulations, and thank you for proudly representing the Brentsville District.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to now recognize Gainesville, Gainesville District. On behalf of Mrs. Wall, because I think she's off now, it is my pleasure to recognize two students from the same high school. From Battlefield High School, I would like to recognize Luke Davis and Alexander Gucci. Both students have graciously declined to speak on behalf of their accomplishment, but representing Battlefield High School today is Assistant Principal Megan Hosteller, and congratulations to you both and to Battlefield High School. At this time, I'd like to, well, let's give them a round of applause. At this time, I'd like to ask all those involved, supporting, so everyone here who's supporting these students, including family members, teachers, parents in the audience, please stand up. We'd like to recognize you for all the work you've done to make this possible. Congratulations again to our six National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. It truly is a big deal, and you really do make us very proud. We are very excited to have you all here tonight. We wish you all the best in your next step, and we know the future is going to be very bright for you. Before taking some pictures, Dr. McDay would like to share a few words. Dr. McDay?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations to each of you. You are truly scholars and embody the PWCS profile of a graduate. We are incredibly proud of all of your accomplishments. And again, I do want to acknowledge that this is truly a testament, not only to your personal dedication and excellence, but also your unwavering support. And many of you have mentioned your family, your teachers, your mentors, and your community. You represent us very well, and we are so proud of each and every one of you. Congratulations. You remind us of what it means to create a thriving future, and we are PWCS proud.
So at this time, I'd like to request our honorees to come forward for a photo with the school board and receive a small token of our appreciation.
Okay, that. Okay, that looks good. Perfect. And everyone, big smiles? Everyone good?
Yes.
Okay, up next is the adoption of the consent agenda. Vice Chair Blake, 1101.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams?
I have a second.
Do we have any discussion? Okay, since Ms. Wall's off the meeting now? Okay, so we can just go ahead and put the vote up? Please vote.
The vote is six yes, two not present at vote. Jesse, Wall, motion passed.
Okay, next up is acknowledgements and recognitions. 12.01, a motion's in order. Vice Chair Blake?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approves the adoption of the acknowledgements and recognitions as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams?
I have a second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Zargarpur?
Yeah, so we're going to have Family Engagement Month in November, and this is near and dear to my heart. It's what I am hopefully studying for my capstone project. And the other one, so it's very important. I want, I want parents to feel involved, and that always helps propel our students into success. Another one that's on this list is also Educational Support Professionals Day. Without them, we can't run our schools. They are there for our kids, and I am grateful for the work that they put in. So, thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to bring attention to the celebration for our Budsman's Day. It was actually on October 9th, but we do have an obudsman here in Prince William County who does wonderful service for us, and obudsman's do throughout their profession. If you are unfamiliar with our obudsman here, I would ask that you look up their services and what they provide, not only for our staff, but for also for the community. And just thank our obudsman for the work she does. Thank you.
Please vote.
Vote is six yes, one abstained, Tradenic, one not present at vote. Wall, motion passed.
Okay, up next is citizen comment time, and those citizens who've signed up in advance with the clerk may address the school board this evening when they're called to the podium. Citizen comment period for regular school board meetings is one hour, and citizens may speak. On agenda items or other topics germane to the operations and policies of Prince William County Schools, please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium, or you will be asked to step aside. We ask that the audience please be respectful of each speaker and refrain from any clapping, cheering, or jeering to avoid disruption of the meeting. If you do not, the board will recess, and I'll ask the room to be cleared to restore public order. Tonight, we have 21 citizens sign up to speak. When I call your name, please come to the podium and state your name and address. And per policy 134, the time allotted for each speaker tonight is two minutes. If you go over the two minutes, I will ask you to stop. It's not because I'm trying to be rude, it's just that's the two minutes, and/or I'll mute the, I'll figure out how to mute the podium and ask you to step aside. Thank you. And we're going to go next to, let me see, so I'll announce the first five names so you know the order, and you can come sit up front, and the seats provided up front if you'd like. The first one, Mary Ann Jensen, Eileen Deveraux, Jen Donnelly, Rena Stapp, and Melissa York. Mary Ann Jensen.
My name is Mary Ann Jensen. My son and his friends showed remarkable initiative in starting a Turning Point USA chapter at Patriot High School, a club open to all students that promotes civic engagement, leadership, and open dialogue, qualities we want every student to develop. Yet, starting this club has been an uphill battle. No teacher would sponsor it, fearing backlash in today's polarized climate that many of you on this board have created, and the students faced excessive hurdles just to get it approved. This is unacceptable. When the Young Democrats Club and the LGBTQ Club can be approved with no problem, why the double standard? Mr. Tracy Blake's verbal assault on Ms. Tradenic after the October 1st board meeting for her support of the Turning Point Club exposes your hypocrisy. You allow a board member to bully a female board member while preaching inclusivity, stifling conservative voices, and free speech for our kids. Mr. Blake, you are a toxic example to our children. I watched a school board member storm out of my speech last year, rejecting my differing views. Leaders who ditch civility betray our children, holding them to a higher standard than you enforce on this board. Your hypocrisy erodes the values you claim to champion. Turning Point USA is mislabeled as divisive and racist by the left. The students in this club are handing out pocket constitutions and American flags to foster free speech. Calling this racist is absurd, and it denigrates that term. This board's committed to tolerance, right? This means tolerating all forms of constitutionally free speech. We demand more from you. We demand that Mr. Tracy Blake resign, because you know that is right. And you can keep smugging, keep smiling, Mr. Blake.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Eileen Deveraux?
Good evening. I'm Eileen Deveraux from the Gainesville District, and I want to speak about certain community-based clubs. When I was a young child, I was taught not to play with fire, and as I got older and mature, I realized that fire unchecked is dangerous. Beyond that, fire can be a source of good, but we also know that it can cause harm and destruction when we're careless and foolish. So I ask you, would you give a child matches? Right now, we live in a climate that's hot, hostile, volatile, and politically charged, and many would say even smoke. And we know when we see smoke, there is fire. The type of fire that I'm talking about is a forest fire. They start rather small and uneventful, a campfire, cigarette, but they span rapidly exploding, erupting, engulfing everything in its path. They spread because the land is dry and it lacks nourishment, and the winds are strong and powerful that carry hate. I mean embers. They fly elsewhere and start a new fire in a new school or maybe a new forest. Sometimes the forests, sometimes the fires are started because of arson, fire starters, of firebugs. People like Jen Wall, who light matches, walk away, act like it didn't happen while all advocating for giving children matches. But don't worry, we see you clearly with all those flames surrounding you. So, Dr. Latif, I ask you, do you insist on giving children matches, knowing that they are hormonal, impulsive? Brains are still developing with emerging face. We are struggling as adults to be civil in this society, yet we are expected to have children to self-regulate? What are we going to do when they burn themselves in each other? Are we going to have planes that drop water from the sky? Are we going to have a Shriners Hospital here to provide treatment for the second and third-degree burns that they receive? No, no, we don't. And some of you still want to fight for the right to light matches, but not the right to be safe in school. All children deserve a positive culture and climate and a safe-to-be and learn. Proof be wrong.
Next, Jen Donnelly.
Good evening. My name is Jen Donnelly, and my address is on file. I'm here to express my concerns about the board's pushback against the formation of the Turning Point chapters in our county schools. It's troubling to see students with differing viewpoints facing resistance rather than support. They deserve the same constitutional protections as any other group, particularly their rights to free speech and association. The issue goes beyond this club. This board has previously failed to uphold Title IX in a manner that respects the privacy and safety of all students. I proposed a compromise allowing transgender students to use staff or nurse bathrooms, an approach that respects everyone's rights. Unfortunately, compromise seems elusive here. The situation worsened when the vice chair verbally attacked Ms. Trednick for supporting the club. This unprofessional behavior aimed to intimidate her into silence is unacceptable. Last year, he physically recoiled when I gave him my business card, claiming he couldn't be seen speaking to me. This is not leadership. In contrast, I appreciate the many members who, despite our differences, always engage respectfully and acknowledge my concerns. We need more of that constructive dialogue. After the recent incident, Ms. Trednick felt shaken and disappointed by the aggression she faced. I urge this board to consider removing Mr. Blake from his leadership position. No elected official should threaten or belittle any colleague. Thank you.
Rena Stapp?
Good evening, Dr. McDay, Dr. Latif, and members of the school board. My name is Rena Stapp, and my address is on file with the court. I had originally intended on speaking about ADHD and disability awareness month. I wanted to showcase how T. Clay Wood Elementary has done a great job with my child's ADHD accommodations, including desk fidgets, headphones, and allowing them to stand while taking notes if needed. Both T. Clay Wood and Marstella Middle have been great about my son's speech therapy and other accommodations for his genetic ataxia. But it seems other issues have come up that need to be addressed. I want to say a few words about Vice Chair Blake. From the first time I attended and spoke at a school board meeting, he was welcoming and positive. Last month, I attended the Casa Bruma Symposium and heard from him about his commitment to keeping the schools an inclusive environment for all, especially those who have been facing a recent increase in discrimination. When I emailed the board with my concerns about protections for transgender and gender nonconforming youth, he replied to me, even though I reside in a different district. In his own words, he said, "I am committed to making sure our schools are safe, supportive, and inclusive for every student without exception." So thank you, Dr. Blake, for all you do for this community. And as a contrast to what the previous speakers had said, the Turning Point USA clubs are not inclusive. They do push a professor watch list, which docks as many people and can put them in danger, and that is not something we need in our schools. And I believe that there are things that need to be taken in consideration before any school clubs can be allowed. Thank you.
Melissa York?
Good evening. My name is Melissa, and my address is on file. My concerns this evening relate to our children's safety at school, and in particular, our young girls and their rights to bodily autonomy and safety in bathrooms and locker rooms. A girl's right to bodily autonomy and privacy is sacred and must not be compromised. The question for the board is whether the Prince William County regulation supports or undermines our children's rights to bodily autonomy and safety. I am not disputing the Grimm case. I am disputing the disproportionate concessions you've made that abuse the ruling of the case. Your newly rewritten regulation now includes language that a person's gender may change day by day. This is not a line from the Grimm ruling where documentary evidence of dysphoria, medical interventions, and parental involvement were all required for the child to enter the bathroom she identified with. Now you are telling me a child may vacillate between genders day to day. Now you are telling me a child may vacillate between genders day to day? Based on the revision of the regulation, you have created an environment ripe for exploitation and manipulation. Your policy allows individuals to access bathrooms and locker rooms based solely on self-certification. This raises concerns over misuse by bad actors and jokesters. The staff at your schools have no objective mechanism to use in determining a student's gender-fluid feelings day to day. What guidance will you provide your staff so they can definitively ensure kids are not taking advantage of the day-to-day clause to get a good glimpse of a young girl undressing? In Virginia, it's a crime for a male to watch a woman undress in a bathroom. The conditions you've created enable criminal acts towards our girls.
Thank you, Ms. York. The next five will be Chris Funderberg, James Taysom, Clara Statler, Katie Murphy, and Joshua Tridnik. Chris Funderberg.
Shame on you. Well, some of you, anyway. Mr. Blake's unprovoked attack on Ms. Tridnik was unwarranted and completely unjustifiable, and this is not the first time he's done it. Blake should resign in shame and never show his face here again and hang up his silly bowtie. At the very least, this board should remove Mr. Blake from his vice chair position and censor him. He has proven that he's incapable of controlling his emotions and has not abandoned his criminal past as he says he has. How can we expect children to behave and follow a code of conduct when those at the very top of the school system cannot do so themselves? This isn't going to be memory-holed. We will continue to bring this up until the board does something meaningful to remedy the situation. Mr. Blake is allowed to not like TPUSA, but as a leader, he is not allowed to bully other board members or support administrators and students that make it hard for TPUSA chapter close to be started in the schools. The Federal Equal Access Act requires a school to allow and not interfere with the startup of non-educational clubs if any others already exist, which they do. You don't have to like it, but you can't try to stop it either. Apparently, the board needs to remind Mr. Blake and the school administrators of this. Thank you.
James Taysom.
My name is James Taysom. My address is on file. And I am here as a parent who is very grateful for what this board has done, for this community, and for this school system. I grew up in a very different area that had a school system that is much more, to the liking of many of those who have spoken today. And it was not a great place to grow up. As a relatively regular, straight, white male, it wasn't a great place to grow up. The intolerance that is taught, whether overtly or just subtly through small comments here and there, makes an environment where so many people feel like they have to hide. And I love seeing my kids come home from school knowing that they don't have to hide. They don't have to be someone besides who they are when they're at school. It is a safe place with great teachers that support them, care for them, and make sure that everyone is included and loved at their schools. The tolerance paradox is very much what is being displayed today, where those that are intolerant of others are screaming for tolerance, realizing that it is not something that is freely given, but it is part of a social contract. And if they are not willing to be part of it, they will find that they are excluded. Thank you.
Clara Statler. Does the podium go down, Ron? Or is that as low as it goes?
Can I start?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, board members, and Dr. McDay. My name is Clara Stalter. My address is on the file with the clerk. I am a fourth-grade student at Mary Williams Elementary School, and I am here along with Leo, a second-grade student at Coles Elementary School. From October 23rd to 31st, our schools will be turning red for a great cause, Red Ribbon Week. Schools across the division will be celebrating the nation's largest drug-free prevention campaign. Red Ribbon Week is all about promoting healthy choices, spreading positive prevention messages, and showing school spirit along the way. This year's theme is "Life is a Puzzle, Solve It Drug-Free." To help bring the message to life, the Red Ribbon Week art contest is back. Students in first to eighth grade may enter a drawing or painting that features this year's theme. The deadline to submit your artwork is the 31st of October. Winners will be recognized right here at November 5th school board meeting. Lastly, we love for everybody to join the fun. On Tuesday, October 28th, we're asking all students, staff, and the community to wear red to show unity and support for health, drug-free living. Let's make the vision shine red. We brought a little swag for each of you to say thank you and for your support. We hope you wear red and celebrate with us. PWCS is committed to teaching students about drug resistance, not only during Red Ribbon Week, but also year-long.
Thank you, Ms. Clara. Very good. Thank you, Clara Statler. We'll go next to Katie Murphy.
Good evening. My name is Katie Murphy, and I live in the Brentsville District. I'm here tonight as a parent and community member deeply concerned about what transpired following the October 1st Board of County Supervisors' school board meeting. What happened that night wasn't a simple disagreement. It was an act of aggression. A board member, Mr. Blake, confronted Mrs. Tridnik, shouted profanities, invaded her personal space, and made threatening remarks involving her family. That's not public service. That's intimidation. We expect our students to treat one another with respect. When the bully intimidates or threatens, there's consequences. Yet, when an adult in a position of leadership does the same thing, silence sends the message that the rules don't apply to everyone. And instead of showing remorse, hours later, Mr. Blake posted on his official school board page, "A wise man once said, 'Don't argue with fools, because from a distance you can't tell who's who.'" That public statement wasn't reflection, it was mockery. It tells the community that he feels no accountability for his conduct. This community deserves better from its leaders. We deserve a school board that upholds its own standards of professionalism and safety, not one that looks the other way when those standards are violated. Accountability here is not optional. It's the foundation of public trust. And this isn't about politics or personalities, it's about safety, respect, and trust, right and wrong. Dr. Latif, members of the board, make him resign.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Joshua Tridnik. Jessica, so the next five? Joshua Tridnik? Okay. The next five will be, and I have 12 crossed off the list, is that correct, Laura? Okay. So Jessica Cher, Jeff Lofgren, Mary Ann Hill, Juliana Fisher, Jan Schulz. Jessica Cher.
You pronounced it right this time.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. This latest round of school board drama isn't going to help the approximately 13,000 students in our district who receive special education. This is a huge distraction. I think that we need to focus our outrage right now on what is happening at the federal level with the Department of Education. I want to address federal firings in the Oval Office of Special, of the Office of Special Education and their impact on IDEA. These cuts threaten the critical services and supports for students with disabilities across our state and here in Prince William County. This should be the thing that we're up here screaming about right now. With oversight drastically reduced, states can no longer reliably review or certify their IDEA obligations. The federal office now operates with a drastically reduced staff serving approximately 8.5 million students with special education needs nationwide. These cuts to the department risk students with disabilities being left out without the services and protections they're legally entitled to. July 1st is the legal deadline for releasing the federal funding that pays for special education teachers, aides, and therapists. If the funds are not released by December 2026, states will have to stretch their current resources, and when that money runs out, there is no backup. The staff who tracks compliance and enforce special education law are being riffed, leaving the office nearly empty. Tonight, I have to ask. I ask that this board reaffirm to families like mine that you are committed to following IDEA's protections and accommodations. Please continue to advocate for the resources.
Next up, Jeff Lofgren.
Good evening, board. My name is Jeff Lofgren, and my address is on record with the clerk. I can't and don't want to speak to what happened at the last board meeting. I wasn't there. But I do want to say what I've observed about Mr. Blake and the time I've known him. He seemed to me to be a calm and principled leader on this school board. He takes his responsibilities as vice chair and board member seriously, and he has maintained a positive demeanor in every interaction I've witnessed, both during board sessions and out of them. From what I've seen, Mr. Blake is a caring, an active member of the Prince William County school board community. He shows up at events and participates enthusiastically in school activities. He's also been very active in communicating with students, parents, and concerned citizens. And I know I appreciate the time he's given to me to talk about issues of concern. Mr. Blake has been and continues to be a voice strongly in favor of equity here in Prince William County. He's been a fierce advocate for protecting the students who need it most and defending the nondiscrimination policy in our county. Thank you for everything you do, board members. Thank you for your time.
Mary Ann Hill.
Hello, my name is Mary Ann Hill, and my address is on file. Good evening, school board members, Dr. McDay, and staff. I'm speaking to you tonight as a parent of three students in the division with dyslexia. I'm also here on behalf of Decoding Dyslexia Virginia, PWC. Our organization was created a year ago to explain what dyslexia is, what it is not, and to support the community that thrives within it. From our work over the last year, we have been networking, attending literacy nights, parent resource events, and speaking with families throughout the entire county. Our website has received inquiries, comments, and questions. Tonight, I would like to share with you a few of them. One, help, all caps. My third-grade son is severely dyslexic, and we need resources to support him. Two, I'm breaching out from my nine-year-old daughter. She is dyslexic, starting fourth grade, and we need help, again, all caps. Three, while I appreciate the efforts our school is making, I'm concerned that the current reading intervention is not aligned with structured literacy, Read 180. Are there any local resources, support groups, or specialists that you can recommend to help my family? And number four, I would love to connect with another parent who has successfully navigated this in PWCS. Although VDOE has made success with this, it has not done yet, so please do not check off the box that we are done with dyslexia. Dyslexic learners need understanding every single day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Juliana Fisher.
Hello, my name is Juliana Fisher, and my address is on file with the board. I'm here this evening to again bring up the topic of the ASL program at Colgan High School. For those of you that may not remember, Mr. Parks is a deaf teacher that was hired to teach the ASL program, with the school district agreeing to provide him an interpreter. He's been an excellent teacher and has provided real-world, hands-on instruction of this subject. His ASL students and their parents were outraged to hear of the planned removal of his interpreter from the classroom. The in-class interpreter was expected to continue this year, and the replacement accommodations provided are laughable at best. Expecting any teacher to use text-to-speech software to teach a classroom of students is an unreasonable ask, and having students be responsible for handling emergency situations is unsafe and unacceptable. Since the basic right of his ability to use his interpreter has been stripped from him, the classroom environment has changed dramatically. Mr. Parks is no longer able to communicate effectively with his students, and their learning has become entirely asynchronous. They are now watching videos on their computers for the entire class period and answering questions that follow. This has resulted in an unreasonable level of classroom noise, to which the solution has been for the students to wear earplugs and noise-canceling headphones so they can focus. My daughter commented to me that while she's no longer learning as much ASL from this technique due to the slower pace of asynchronous learning, she is in fact learning a lot about real-world things like discrimination, isolation, and unfair work environments. I'm beyond disappointed with the county's decision to make these changes, and even more disappointed that no one with the ability to change this seems to care enough to do so. I sincerely hope that you as Prince William County's school board and superintendent will do what is right for the ASL program at Colgan High School and their teacher, Mr. Parks, who deserves to be treated like a valued and respected member of the school community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jan Schulz. And then after that, we'll have, excuse me on the names, Shaylin Klinger, Carl Gritten, Hina Ansari, Caitlin Weston, Gloria Jordan, Robin Norris. That will wrap it up. And so we start with Ms. Schulz.
Thank you. Good evening, board. My name is Jan Schulz, and I'm, my address is on file with the clerk. I'm the proud daughter of an elementary school teacher and the granddaughter of a high school principal. Public education is deeply personal to me, and I believe strongly in the power that it can transform lives. I'm here tonight to express my gratitude to each of you for your service, for your leadership, and the important decisions that you make on behalf of the children and the families of Prince William County. I want to especially recognize one member of this board who has gone above and beyond in showing up for our community, Vice Chair, Mr. Blake. This past summer, I served on the organizing committee for PWC Hunger Free, a community event aimed at fighting food insecurity in our county. On a hot July day, Mr. Blake joined us, not just as a board member, but as a parent, bringing his children to enjoy the activities and speaking to the crowd about the importance of ensuring no child in our county goes hungry. This is just one example of how Mr. Blake consistently shows up. At a time when emotions can run high, I believe it is important that we focus on actions. And Mr. Blake's actions show us that he is a valuable asset to this board and to our community. Thank you again to each one of you for your dedication to our schools and to our students. Thank you.
Shaylin Klinger.
Good evening. My name is Shaylin Klinger, and my address is on file. I'm a licensed clinical social worker, the founder of Cerebral Counseling and Consulting. I'm also a neurodiversity advocate for Decoding Dyslexia Prince William County, and I'm a collaborative partner of Find the ADHD Girls. But above all else, I'm a mom of two neurodivergent girls in Prince William County schools. For decades, ADHD has been understood through a male-centered lens. Diagnostic criteria were built around boys, leaving thousands of girls overlooked or misdiagnosed. Boys are diagnosed nearly three times more often than girls. Yes, research shows the actual rates are much closer. The difference is how symptoms appear. Girls with ADHD are often quiet, daydreamy, or overly talkative. They internalize rather than act out. Instead of being sent to the office, they're praised for trying hard while silently battling anxiety and burnout. As a therapist and a mom, I see bright, creative, compassionate girls who are exhausted from masking. I see girls that deserve to be creative, empathetic, and show their own innovation. Awareness alone is not enough. Schools are our first line of recognition, and educators really are our greatest allies. So tonight, I'm urging the board to continue leading in mental health awareness and inclusion by providing training for teachers and counselors on how ADHD presents in girls, by implementing equitable screening that captures inattentive and internalized symptoms, by integrating classroom supports that help all learners, movement breaks, visual schedules, and partnering with clinicians and parent groups in the community. Because when we see these girls clearly, we don't improve academic outcomes, we improve lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have Carl Gritten.
Good evening. I'm Carl Gritten of the Gainesville District. We see ads that our 21st District Virginia delegate has come up with $10 million for the school system. Where did this money come from? Did this come from the general fund? This money could have been used for affordable housing or reduce the cost of personal property taxes. If these $10 million has come from the school funds, then what is the representative doing with an accurate school budget? Was this money transferred through a county or state audit? Where do we see the monthly report on the school budget? Is this reported to countywide citizens? The school board is making a big deal that Prince William County is number one in teacher pay throughout the region. Have people looked at the numbers? Have people looked at the numbers? The amount of monies that is above other counties is about $1,000 a year. Divide that number by 12 months and hopefully the math teachers out there can see this as a mere pittance. The answer is an increase of about $100 a month. Take away taxes and you'll get a hamburger increase for your pay. If you really want to make a difference, lobby for this amount to be about $100,000 salary per teacher. Oh, I forgot, PWA is suspended because they lavishly spent money on hotels when they went to conferences. The Virginia Education Association, VEA, is a school union of Virginia for Prince William County. It is amazing that this school association is endorsing a candidate that has threatened to kill his political opponent and has threatened the wife with a statement that she should imagine life without her two children. How can anyone support this candidate for Attorney General?
Thank you. Next up, Hina Ansari.
All right, good evening, Board members. Hello, Superintendent McDade. I don't think I have any good pop culture references for you today. I'm really sorry. And my address is on file. I just wanted to talk, I was going to talk about the PSAT because happy PSAT day tomorrow. I know you're glad you don't have to do it anymore, right? You're good. Yeah, I know, right? I'm studying for a standardized test right now. It sucks. And I'm really mad that that camera makes me look like I added like 40 pounds, and I really need somebody to work on that and tech support for me if you could. But I wanted to talk about, I heard a lot of things about inclusivity and safety regarding the TPUSA club, and I wanted to kind of take a different angle from it. I'm studying for the LSAT, which is the law school. I think I've talked about this many times and I'm still studying. Don't ask how I'm doing. It's not important. And there's a type of question called the evaluate question, where you get in a situation and you have to evaluate, what's the best-case scenario and the worst-case scenario? And I feel like with the TPUSA, the best-case scenario is that they're just a debate club, but the worst-case scenario terrifies the heck out of me. I mean, I don't want kids, and they're already kind of scared, but I don't want kids to be afraid that they're going to get lynched because some kids just want to have a meeting that's not far right. It's like, we want to eliminate the other people. And if you've ever listened to anything that TPUSA said, it's scary. So I just think that I'm glad that you guys are trying to stay out of it. I hope that the kids will continue to feel safe. I don't know what's going to happen. Good luck. Good night. And tomorrow, don't guess C too many times on the PSAT. That's usually a bad sign.
Kaitlyn Weston.
McDade, Dr. Latif, and members of the school board. My name is Katie Weston. I am a parent, educator, and community member, and my address is on file with the clerk. Even though it is not School Board Appreciation Month, I wanted to take some time to share my appreciation for one of our school board members, Mr. Tracy Blake, because I believe we all deserve recognition when it is warranted. As elected citizen leaders, school board members face complex and demanding challenges as they advocate for the education of students and the well-being of staff. And their work is not done when they leave the school board room. The time spent in the boardroom represents just a small fraction of the hours school board members invest in our district. It is clear to me that Mr. Blake has spent so much of his time investing in our community in so many ways. Over the summer, as mentioned, Mr. Blake joined us at our PWC Hunger Free event. He spoke at the event, bringing awareness to food insecurity issues in our district. He, along with other elected representatives in Prince William County, helped the community to raise over $3,000 and 6,000 pounds of food for our local food pantries in just two hours. Mr. Blake recently joined the community at the Casa Brumar Symposium, an event held with the intention of strengthening networks connecting our community with resources and amplifying visibility. I was thrilled to hear Mr. Blake speak and answer questions from the community at this very important event. And most importantly to me, when a group of parents needed to speak to our PWCS leadership, Mr. Blake responded very quickly, set aside time to hear our stories.
Thank you, Ms. Weston.
Thank you.
Gloria Jordan.
My name is Gloria. My address is on file. It's time for us to stop getting distracted by the he said, she said, and start focusing on what truly matters, and that's our children. Every moment we waste on drama is a moment lost from improving their education, safety, and future. Let's refocus on what impacts all of our students. I do want to say that Tracy Blake is the kind of leader who shows up, not just when the cameras are rolling, but every single day. You'll see him at school events, family nights, community gatherings. He listens. He's deeply committed to the parents, teachers, and students, and follows through on what he says he's going to do. He builds genuine relationships and volunteers his time beyond duty. Tracy Blake proves that service consistency and compassion define true public leadership. I would also like to say that casting blame without any evidence is never acceptable, and there should never be discipline based on hearsay. Also, turning point clubs carry racist and exclusionary messages. They have a long history of bigoted rhetoric. They criticize public schools and teachers. Why would we want a club that weakens equality and disparages public education? With federal cuts eliminating 450 positions and millions from an already underfunded special education budget, school boards should be stepping up and calling on us to fight that. We can prioritize local funding, strengthen partnerships, and work hard to protect our children. Every child deserves access to the support they need to learn and grow. Thank you.
Robin Norris.
My name is Dr. Robin Norris and my address is on file. I wanted to thank you for your continued efforts and conversations around the topic of dyslexia. It's a hidden disability that affects at least 15% of our students in the district. It's also genetic, and that means we must consider that parents as partners who also struggle with reading and writing. According to Yale's Dr. Shea Witz, if a parent has dyslexia, there's a 50% chance their child will too. If one child in the family has it, there's a 75% chance a sibling will as well. As a professor, clinician, and parent, my days are filled with words, emails, texts, instructions, forms, all time-sensitive, all seemingly urgent. I don't get to wander through a forest looking at trees or studying the ocean tides as my guides. It's words. I have to keep up to help my children, my students, and my clients to keep going. We live in a world where words matter. They can be lifesaving. The more you notice words in the wild and daily life, the more you'll see their weight. Authorized personnel only? That's a seventh-grade reading level. It's kind of hard to decode. So my ask of this district is to look for the future engineers, artists, attorneys, teachers, and authors in places you might not think to look, like actor Amir Baraka who plays Jeremiah in Zatima and the mystery writer Agatha Christie. I too use accommodations and dictate most of what I write. I listen to my emails and my texts and the words I've written to you all to make sure I do this as well as I can. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. And just as always, if the community wants to communicate with the Board, they always have the right also to email the Board and send in video messages as well. Thank you very much. Moving on next to, we are now at item 1401, Legislative Priorities. This is on for a vote. Dr. McDade, do you have any updates on this?
No, Mr. Chairman. This was brought before the Board at the last meeting. If there are any questions, we do have Mr. Matt Gifford here to answer any questions based on his presentation at the prior meeting.
Ms. Sargapar.
I did send an email about my concern with, where's Mr. Gifford? Oh, he's over there. Sorry. I'm like, okay. I sent an email with some concerns about, there's a lot of, it depends and what-ifs in the future, but with the federal government looking like they're going to replace the Department of Education with putting the money in other departments and then sending those in block grants to the states possibly, I wanted to know if we could get a little ahead and have Virginia maintain any monies that we do receive still get funneled to the things they're intended to go to? Did anybody get that email to you?
That's actually a Shaquille question.
Oh, it's a Shaquille question?
I'm sorry, Mr. Youssef. Mr. Youssef is our CFO.
Well, I just wanted to know if that is something that we could advocate to our legislature to sort of ensure?
So it is already included in the legislative priorities. It is not written as with the level of specificity you just described, but it does have in there an overall advocacy to replace any potential loss once it's if and when it's identified from a federal source with state funding. So as of right now, and let Mr. Youssef talk to, any impacts that are known or unknown right now?
So at this moment, there are no known impairments to our federal funding. We are continuing to provide our reimbursements to the state. And at the same time, we have several new applications that I briefed everybody on, at the BOCs joint meetings. So our next major reimbursement due date is actually today by our deadline. And so within the next few weeks, we'll see if there is, in fact, any effect of that impairment. But right now, there is no known impairment. And as Matt said, we already have an item here to seek replacement should there be any significant impairment to our federal funds.
Thank you.
On that note, Dr. McDade, maybe Matt, you know, we do the legislative agenda every year and it's primarily geared towards the General Assembly and down to Richmond. Do we have, you know, we haven't really put together legislative agenda for the federal government. I mean.
Not in my seven years here that I'm aware of.
I mean, I don't know if that's something we should think about, especially with all the changes happening, whether it's, you know, makes sense to do that, but something for the Board to sort of contemplate or Dr. McDade. No answer needed now, but I mean, we've never done that in time. I've been on the Board as well, but maybe it makes sense to do that now. I don't know. Okay. If no one has any further questions, please vote. The motion was read. Oh, did we read the motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Chair Blake, please read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approves the legislative priorities for the 2026 legislative session.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams.
A second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one not present at vote. Ball, motion passed.
Okay. Moving on to 1501, we have a presentation on what the 14th high school, how it's looking so far. Dr. McDade.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is my pleasure to introduce our Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Vern Bach. He is presenting the DLR group that are joining us this evening to provide a presentation on the design of our 14th high school. Mr. Bach?
Thank you, Dr. McDade, and good evening, Chairman Dr. Latif, school board members, and Dr. McDade. It is my pleasure to be here with you to unveil the design of the 14th high school to you. Just want to recap, this has been over a year's worth of engagement with students, community members, educators across the division, senior leadership, administrative staff, the academic office, really to have and take all that stakeholder feedback and to provide to you this design. I want to thank the DLR group. It's been a really nice journey with them over the past year. Just to share with you, the DLR group is 100% employee-owned global design firm that's backed by over 1,700 design professionals. And this evening, we have with us Brian Donnelly, Senior Project Manager and Senior Associate, also Emily Capadelupo, Architect. They'll both be presenting tonight. And I also want to recognize we do have Justin Moss here with us, our Director of Facilities, and Vince Santmyer, our Supervisor of Construction. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Brian. Brian Donnelly.
Dr. Latif, Dr. McDade, members of the Board, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you tonight and give you a little update on the design progress for the 14th high school. As Vern mentioned, we're very proud to have been selected for this project, and it's been a joy to work with your staff on the progress here. We start, of course, with the site that we received. And as many of you know, it's a challenging site. It's at the corner of Minnieville Road, which is to the north of the site, and Summit School Road, which is currently being extended down to Telegraph Road. What you see is our sort of interpretation of what was there. The orange stripe that goes through the middle of the site is a power line easement for Dominion Power, and the sort of blue, the blue sort of lines that go through the middle of the site are a resource protection area. There's actually a small stream that runs through the site, and so in perpetuity, there will be a woodland that is reserved at the middle of the site. These are things that we see as sort of opportunities, a way to sort of approach this site in a unique way. Of course, the most important thing that we did during the process of design was to meet with you, to meet with your constituents, to meet with students, staff, and talk about what it is that Prince William County most values and how we can reflect those values in the school design. Without reading a slide, I will at least summarize it this way. What we learned is that this school should be a place where the community feels they belong, where every student feels like they have a place to belong, and where sustainability and sustainable environmental literacy is just part of the everyday experience of the place. So we took the site that we received and we reimagined it a bit. As you see here on the slide, we've placed the building in the middle of the site, and we've placed the playing fields to what is the north side of the site, addressing Minnieville Road. This was done for two reasons. One was to take advantage of the presence of this site on Minnieville Road, which is right next to the, it's right across the street from the Centerra Health Center, if you're familiar with that, and near the Ebenezer Baptist Church on the west side. So the football field or the football stadium, the sports stadium will provide a presence on Minnieville. The location of the building in the middle of the site does a couple of things for us. One is that it allows the building to address that resource protection area and actually makes that stream and woodlands a part of the learning experience. To the east side of the site, facing Summit School Road, is where the parent entry will be. So all of the visitors to the site will come in from the same spot on Summit School Road. We see that as sort of addressing the town side. We've taken as our inspiration sort of the fact that the site is not far from Okeechobee. Tackett's Mill is right sort of around the corner from us. So there's water running through our site. So we've taken that theme of water as sort of part of our inspiration. What you see here is the basic organization of the site. The red line that runs north or sort of east to west there is what it sort of connects the, what we are thinking of as the land side of the site with the river side of the site. So the river side literally is where the stream runs through the site. And then the other line that goes north-south or side to side on the page, that divides the school into two pieces. One is the sort of academic side, again, addressing that sort of woodland stream, and then the community side, which addresses the sort of street side. And on that community side will be all of the gathering spaces like the cafeteria, theater, and the gym. We'll get a little bit, go into a little bit more detail about the organization of the building, but basically what you see on the screen now is our sort of fundamental way of thinking about this building and breaking down the scale of it. It's a place for 1,400 students, but we want to think about it as a place for each individual, every one student. How do you break down that scale so that people feel they belong? We start with this idea of a boardwalk, again, referring to the sort of themes of a marina. So the boardwalk will run all the way along the length of the school, and there are three nodal points or three sort of focal points. One at the main entry, where we provide what we're calling a landing. There are other landings at the cafeteria and another one that overlooks the gym. And by breaking down the scale of the building that way, it really gives each individual student an opportunity to sort of find their place. We've also broken down the academic side into what we call small learning communities. You'll hear us use that word a lot, again, trying to make a school for that many students feel as though you belong. We break this down, and you see in the slide a diagram of these sort of four wedge-shaped blocks that are each three stories tall, and each of those is the small learning community. So each individual student has a place where they can sort of call their home within the The site is sort of nestled into the, or the building is sort of nestled into the side of a hill on the site, so not every floor is the same. What you're seeing here is the main floor. This is the main entry level. There's also a half-floor below us and a story and a half above us. So on this level, the wedge-shaped spaces that are in blue, those are the academic programs. So in the dark blue are the sort of core curriculum. And then embedded in each of those small learning communities is also And then embedded in each of those small learning committees is also the applied learning pieces, the science labs, the CTE labs, things that sort of allow students to sort of get both, both experiences of applied learning as well as academic learning. And each of the houses, each of those small learning communities contains these same elements. And then you see on the sort of lower part of the screen, the main entrance is indicated by that little red triangle, administrative offices and a health suite on either side of that. To the far, to the right of the screen there is the cafeteria in pink and then the theater in, in, in purple. You're, from this floor, you also can look down into a couple of major spaces. One is, of course, the gym, but the other is the, what we, what we refer to as the white box, which is actually the, the robotics and drone sort of flight area. So, that can be a demonstration area for those kinds of programs as well. As I said, there's, it's nestled into the hillside, so there's a lower level below the main entry level. This is also the level where the buses, students will be dropped off from the buses. So, you see there the gymnasium in green and the other sort of, the other athletic programs and, and PE programs in green as well, and then two of the small learning communities as, as well. And then above the main level, entry level, which is on the second floor, the library is immediately above the, immediately above the entrance and sort of provides the sort of center, the sort of social and academic center for this floor. It also overlooks the cafeteria and you see the small learning communities here as well. And then finally, the, the third floor is a half a level as well. So, each of the small learning communities is a three-level structure. So, what does this look like? As you approach from the southeast, as I said, there's a, everybody will approach the site from the same entrance. You'll see this. This is the, an image of the gym with the sort of sawtooth roof providing daylight into that gym, so it will never sort of feel like it's a closed-off box. As you sort of look into the distance, you see the, the main entrance and beyond that theater. The drop-off loop will actually take you to the north of the site and loop you back around. So, this now, you're looking from the opposite side of the building at the rehearsal rooms and the theater with the, with the main entrance and the cafeteria in the dis, or, I'm sorry, the, the gym in the distance. And this is the main entrance. So, on the site, there is a plaza that will sort of welcome students that also will connect the street all the way back into the building at this point. So, the main entrance is seen as a little bit more formal with a broad overhanging roof that is both welcoming but also sheltering, again, making this, giving everyone who enters this building the sense of, of, of welcome in the sense that this is actually a place where they belong. On the other side, I refer to the idea that this is sort of a riverside. And we use that analogy, not that we want the building to look like a boat, but you see the sort of, in the, the sort of way that the facade sort of ripples across, the idea that this, this recalls the idea of a dynamic sort of movement of water in the wind. It's, it's meant to be playful, it's also meant to be dynamic, but it's meant to sort of recall that, that idea of movement. And then immediately, on the other side, this is, this is looking at that same, those same academic blocks, but now from the north. The, the academic block is seen as something a little bit more of an anchor. It's, it's made of stone, it's of the earth, and it feels as though it's, it's really sort of anchoring the building to the site. So, it's a mix of these sort of playful elements as well as, as well as sort of solidity. And then this is the entry from the, from where the buses will drop off, also the entrance where folks will arrive if they're coming for a sporting event in the gym. So, this is where, you know, many of the students will begin their day. And as they go through this entrance, they're, they're greeted by the first of what we referred to as the landings. This is a double-height space, it's the gym lobby. It also has a, a piece that sort of overlooks into the gym. So, the idea is that this is in, you know, a, a space that's, that's grand, but at the same time feels academic and feels like a place where, where you can socialize, where you can hang out, where you can actually feel like a student. This is looking at the, the landing above. So, this is, this is above where we just entered, again, looking down into the gym, a place of gathering, a place for informal learning. And at the main entrance, we were, this is the, the second of the landings, the, the idea is that as you enter this building, you see a couple of things. One is you look straight ahead and you see the, the woodlands beyond. So, there's a connection from, from, from the land side to the riverside, but you also see connections vertically. So, there's an opening in the floor above so that you can sort of connect to things that are going on around the building. You see the, the building expand left and right as well. The idea that everybody feels connected as you walk into this building. On that second floor landing overlooking, overlooking the entrance, again, that view to the woodlands beyond, the sense of, of the interiors, the sense of nature permeating the building. And then finally, the cafeteria, the last of our, of our three sort of landing spots or, or the three, the three focal nodes. This, you know, a primary social space, again, an opportunity for, for, for gathering, for small gathering, for extended learning, and for opportunities for informal learning. This is the same space, that cafeteria, with a view back towards the, towards the theater. The cafeteria doubles as the sort of pre-function and, and sort of foyer of the, of the theater as well. You'll see all of these images filled with light, filled with views to the outdoors. There's no, no room in the space that is without windows. And then that boardwalk I referred to, which is really the concourse that, that sort of links the building from, you know, all along its length, we don't want that to feel like just a big, long corridor. And I think in this image, you see that it really doesn't. What it feels like is it feels like it's a part of the natural environment, but it also, you, you see how the small learning communities anchor themselves to that or tie themselves in. So, in the distance there, you see the, the small learning community and, and the transition from that big, long concourse into that sort of small, more intimate space. All along this path are opportunities for, for engagement with your fellow students. So, the material palettes that we're thinking about are all things that sort of recall nature, things that are, that feel like stone or feel like wood, the woods, the, the greens and blues of, of this sort of natural environment, bringing all of that to the extent that we can indoors so that there's a sort of seamless connection between, between the natural world and the built world. And where we are in the process, we are, we are on our schedule to finish construction documents by the end of May for permit. And then the project will go out to bid, we're on schedule to go out to bid in September and after a construction period of several months, 30 months, I believe, on schedule to open for students to come in the doors in fall of 2029. So, again, thank you for your, for your time and for your update. I welcome any questions that you have regarding the design.
Questions? Mr. Jesse?
I don't have any question. I just want to thank you for your presentation. This is something we've been looking forward to for a very long time and it sounds very exciting and, and looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Chairman Latif. I recognize that I was off the dais for most of your presentation, but I have seen it, so I just want to state that publicly. I just want to thank all of you for the hard work that you've done. This is by far one of the most innovative architectural designs that I have seen since being a school board member, and I think you really have captured the voice of all stakeholders in this. I recognize nothing is going to be 100% one way or somebody's or the others, but that's a lot of work in itself. And I, I really want to thank all of you as well as, as this board for really taking the time to listen to our community and the stakeholders and being involved in this proposed design. I'm very excited by this building. I think it will, it will continue us on an innovative path in education and allow for a lot more opportunities than we currently have now for our students. And I just want to say, I really appreciate your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Mr. Jesse? Sure?
I also want to thank you for talking about the drone robotic area. That's something very important to me and to, I mean, those programs are just expanding greatly and we needed a, a separate facility. The other thing that you didn't mention, I think you should, is that in case we do start growing, this school is expandable. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. Happy to. I, I mentioned the small learning communities and pointed out that of those wedge-shaped spaces, we had four of those. There's actually space on the site that we've reserved for a fifth, and so that will expand the, the capacity of the school. The cafeteria can be expanded as well. The gym and the theater are already designed for a school of a, of a slightly greater capacity, so they're building in that sort of future-proofing of those spaces that are really hard to expand later. Yeah. So, we've been, we've had that in mind.
Any other questions? Mr. Welk?
Hey, thank you for the presentation. With the potential of exorbitant costs for something like this, looking down the road, this doesn't have to be obviously rectified right now, but I was thinking one thing of possibly rationalizing moving forward still with something like that despite news articles showing us a declining student population would be make it more of a multipurpose building, make it more something that has community usage, whether it be, I'm just throwing things out, like a library that can do, you know, serve us for the community and the school depending on the hours, whether it's a rec center, you know, something to that capacity so there's more usage and it's not just a school. It gives the community more collaboration and opportunity to, you know, engage. I think these are resources that we need. I know not, we're not necessarily the ones who do this, but it is an opportunity to build a partnership with the county potentially like we did with the swimming pool at Colgan. So, those are just some thoughts initially as we potentially come up with some obstacles to building this structure.
Thank you, Mr. Welk.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Moving on to student representative time, we now have Karina Grover from the Charles J. Colgan Senior High School. Ms. Grover?
Hello and good evening to the wonderful PWCS community, esteemed members of the school board, and our amazing superintendent, Dr. McDade. I am so grateful to once again be with you all to represent student voices countywide. We are now 240 days away from the last day of school. Who's counting, but yeah. First, I'd like to wish good luck to all students in grades nine through 11 who are taking their PSAT tomorrow. PWCS offers this test as a great opportunity to practice for the SAT and better understand your strengths in areas for growth. Take this chance to learn and prepare so you can do your best on the SAT in the future. Good luck to everyone. Remember to try your best and know that this test does not define you. On Monday, PWCS hosted the first School Counselor Summit, which focused on helping all counselors continue to grow and better support our students. I would like to thank PWCS for giving the Student Senate the opportunity to participate in a panel discussion where we were able to advocate for students' needs and perspectives regarding school counseling. This is another key example of student advocacy in action and I am beyond grateful for the opportunity to be a part of it. I also want to take this chance to remind every student in PWCS that your counselor is here to support you. I met with counselors from elementary schools to high schools and they are very dedicated to guiding you and helping you succeed. It was great to see all the passionate counselors in PWCS and I thank you for always supporting students. We really need it, so thank you. Now, with computers and devices not functioning properly, tech departments countywide are being significantly overworked. For example, at Colgan High School, the tech team consists of a significantly small team that currently has 3,000 open tech tickets, meaning there are 3,000 individual issues that need to be addressed. This affects students' learning every day and highlights the urgent need for additional support and resources for our technology staff. Now, I would like to highlight some of the amazing work being done by our Student Voice Committees countywide. At Woodbridge High School, students have been collaborating with their admin team to increase socialization during lunches. Their creative ideas include bringing in board games and even playing sports games on the TVs during lunch periods. Unity Reed High School is planning an open-mic night, giving students a chance to voice their opinions. This event will also help them identify common goals that they can work to address throughout the year. Lastly, I want to recognize Patriot High School for their consistent dedication to the SVC Center. This space is, is designed to provide students with the tools and resources they need to advocate for themselves. They are almost finished with this room and we are all so excited to see this final product. This is just a small glimpse of the incredible work our SVCs are doing. I could go on for a while, but I'll stop there. I am beyond excited to see all that we accomplished this year. To finish my remarks, I would like to pay respects to Candace King, who was a student at Colgan High School. Candace King passed away recently and many students, teachers, and admin are grieving this loss. We are a PWCS family and we will all support each other through this hard time. Whether you knew Candace or not, I want to highlight some key mental health resources you can use during this hard time. First, make sure to reach out to your counselors. I personally know, personally know, it may feel scary to advocate yourself to reach out, but they are here to support you. PWCS also offers Hazel Health, a free online system that provides mental health services ensuring students receive the support they need. If you see someone struggling, make sure to reach out and remember you are never alone. I also want to acknowledge the Colgan Choir. They attended Candace's funeral today and I know it was very hard for most of them. They were so close. They, this just shows such a community that PWCS creates and even in this hard time, we stay together and that's just so powerful to me. So, yeah, I basically just said that. Through the ups and downs, we are sticking together, we are staying strong. I want to remind every student to join your SVCs, reach out to your senators, and use your voice. Your voice matters, it has power, it makes a difference, and I promise I will personally never stop advocating for it. Let's continue to ignite change together. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Grover, thank you. And thank you for attending the, the counseling and, and reporting back on what the Student Senate saw with the counselors. We truly appreciate that. All right. Dr. McDade, superintendent's time. You're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tomorrow, as we heard earlier, is PSAT Day across PWCS. This assessment helps students practice for the SAT, connects with scholars, connect with scholarships, and get personalized guidance for post-secondary planning. I want to thank all of our principals, testing coordinators, counselors, and teachers for the coordination that make a division-wide administration possible. Students, please arrive on time, bring a charge device if required by your school, and do your absolute best because you got this. In honor of National School Lunch Week, we are celebrating our incredible food and nutrition services team. I am looking forward to serving lunch alongside our staff later this week at one of our middle schools, and I promise the lunch team I won't give out too many curly fries. I enjoy seeing the smiles of our students and witnessing the care that goes into feeding tens of thousands of students every single day. Healthy meals fuel learning. Thank you to our cafeteria managers, nutritionists, and food service professionals for your commitment to quality, safety, and service. Next week is National School Bus Safety Week, a reminder that safety is a shared responsibility from door to door. To our bus drivers, attendants, routers, mechanics, and transportation staff, I want to thank you for safely transporting our students in a timely manner every single day. We also observe America's Safe Schools Week next week. Safety is foundational for learning. PWCS continues to strengthen our layered safety approach through training, drills, mental health support, threat assessments, and partnerships with public safety agencies. Thank you to our school administration, safety and security team, counselors, social workers, psychologists, school resource officers, and all staff who help build a culture of vigilance and care. As we look ahead to the coming weeks, I want to highlight several important opportunities and events for our students, staff, and families. Every high school has a dedicated college and career counselor. So, during Virginia College Application Week, I encourage students to make an appointment with their post-secondary resource counselor and take advantage of the support's financial aid opportunities and information available for all pathways, including military, apprenticeships, and industry credentials. Additionally, families can also access student vision profile reports through ParentView. These reports are available for students in grades six through 12, and these profiles help guide meaningful conversations at home about post-secondary goals and the steps needed for your child to, to achieve those goals. I also want to thank the counselors, college and career teams, and many community partners for expanding post-secondary opportunities for every student to thrive after graduation. I encourage every member of the PWCS community to share their voice in shaping the 26-27 school calendar by participating in our annual calendar survey, open through this Friday, October 17th. So, if you had not had an opportunity to take a look at the survey, please open it and review the survey and complete it prior to close of business on Friday, the 17th. Your feedback is essential and I want to thank the many parents, guardians, teachers, support staff, school leaders, students, and community partners who have already contributed to this important process. to this important process through the Calendar Committee. The survey results will be presented to the full school board in November, with a final decision expected in December. PWCS is proud to have over 35 specialty programs from elementary to middle school and high school. We even have a grade one through eight specialty program. Our specialty programs focus on career exploration, subject area concentration, and post-secondary preparation. PWCS provides excellent opportunities that give students the chance to investigate careers, ranging from the fine arts to building trades to advanced computer science. Applications for our specialty programs will open in early November. Please note that the Center for Fine and Performing Arts application is due December 15th, while all other applications are due February 1st, so there is an earlier deadline for the Center for Fine and Performing Arts. For further inquiries, you may email or call our Advanced Academics and Specialty Programs Department. Their contact information is available on our website at pwc.edu. PWCS is also hosting three Family Engagement Series webinars for students and families to learn more about specialty programs in PWCS. Last night, PWCS held a Family Engagement webinar for information on specialty programs for elementary school students. This online seminar is available for review on our website. The online seminar for specialty programs for middle school students will take place October 23rd at 6:30 PM, and the online seminar on specialty programs for high school students will take place October 28th at 6:00 PM. I encourage interested students and families to attend to receive valuable information. More information can be found on our website, pwc.edu. You can go to Academic Programs, find the link for Advanced Academic and Specialty Programs, and then select Specialty Programs. In closing, I would like to share that our schools and offices will be closed next Tuesday, October 21st, in observance of Dewali. Mr. Chairman, this concludes Superintendent's time.
Thank you, Dr. McDade. At this time, it is Board Matters. We will start with Ms. Argarpur.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank the Decoding Dyslexia folks when they come out. I always learn a lot from them when you've hosted events, and I've gone. I'm very appreciative for being able to have that opportunity, and how dyslexia can affect our students, hearing the personal stories. So please keep your advocacy up. I'm happy to learn more and do whatever I can as a board member, both here in Prince William, but also in advocacy to government officials in whatever capacity. So please make sure you keep inviting me to those things, I appreciate it. Concerning calendar, I'm going to say it one more time about, I really think we need to add at least a half day before the end of the quarter in elementary school. For our elementary teachers, they lack, of all the teachers, they get, what, 45 minutes, I think, in most elementary schools. I know there's principals who do, like, move heaven and earth to make sure that their teams get a little bit more planning, but it is, they're teaching general subjects, and getting the time to really work through their grades is such a gift, so if we could add half-days, then that still counts towards the 180 days our students are in school, and it gives the gift of time to our elementary teachers. I want to thank all the people who've emailed with different concerns. Yes, as board members and as leaders, we should be conducting ourselves a certain way. We need to be examples to the community, to our students, in how we handle ourselves, and also how we resolve problems. I think one of the biggest skills we could be teaching our kids is how to listen and work with others. And with that, I'm just going to wish everyone a good evening. Thank you all for staying with us this night.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we know, October is Hispanic Heritage Month, so I just want to take a moment out to encourage all of those who are not familiar with Hispanic culture to please do so. I'm sorry to have missed Fred Lynn's Hispanic Heritage Celebration tonight. Some of my robotics kids were participating in the event, and I hope it went well. In past events, we had our joint legislative meeting here last week, so I would encourage those who were not in attendance for the meeting, or would like to learn more about what was discussed, that should be, I'm sure there's a video somewhere, but basically it was just an update of where we stand from the county government side, as well as the school division, and what we should be looking forward to the future and considering as we work collaboratively together. I would very much like if we would have an uptick in those meetings, because I think we do work well together, both boards, and I just hope that we can continue to collaborate on a more frequent basis. And other news, I do know that the Title I Parent Camp is this weekend. I didn't see it advertised, I'm pretty sure it is this weekend, which is the 18th at Hampton, from 8:30 to 12:30. Usually in attendance, but there may be a scheduling conflict this weekend. We have a meeting here as well. Another upcoming, or another event that I am proud to have attended was the Crisis Receiving Center, had a ribbon-cutting earlier last week, and it was attended by pretty much everyone, elected representatives from all up and down the ballot. I just want to spend a special shout-out to Andrea Bailey, because I know this was an idea that she had championed since becoming a Board of County Supervisor member, but I know it's not just one person that makes it happen. I also want to mention that last week I did tape a board briefing at Freedom High School. They have such amazing programs going on over there, and I hope everyone will take the opportunity to check that out. In addition to that, they have some really cool media studio, which I heard our own communications department set up, so they could do video morning announcements, and hopefully will be a budding program. So thank you to Communications for not only assisting me from taping my board brief, but for adding to opportunities for students at Freedom. As mentioned before, next week is Safe Schools Week, so I hope everyone wears red. And the last thing that I want to say is that October is Anti-Bullying Month. According to the Code of Virginia, bullying means "any aggressive, any unwanted behavior that is intended to harm, intimidate, humiliate, or humiliate the victim, involves a real or perceived power imbalance between the aggressor or aggressors and the victim, and is repeated over time and causes severe emotional trauma. Bullying includes cyberbullying, it does not include any ordinary teasing, horseplay, argument, or peer conflict." I read that because bullying affects all of us, and I just bring this to special attention because it's something we talk about often. And as a board member who has a middle school student, I brought this subject up to him. And let me be clear, one thing that we should be proud of, what I heard back response from him was, "Mom, my friends and I, we go to school, and all the things that are occurring and adults are talking about, and in public and in the nation, and on the news, when we go to school, we don't hear that. We show up safe, ready to learn, and be kids." So I think all of us should be proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Jesse.
Thank you. One of the things that we mentioned, I mentioned a couple of board meetings ago, and I'd like to remind our board members, we talk a lot about boundaries and getting boundaries done, but we have not set any agenda or timing for that, so I would encourage other board members, maybe another two, to let's get it on the agenda and start working on boundaries, because I think it's very important. We have Woodbridge Elementary School coming, opening very soon. We have Akaquan Elementary School, opening soon, and we don't have any boundaries yet for those, so that's, I think, is important. I'd like to address this issue that we had today, talking with some of the Citizen Time. And, you know, I agree, you know, what happened was inappropriate, and in my opinion, on both sides of the aisle, and should not have happened. However, let's not be hypocritical. Some of us voted for a person who is a bully, is bullying states, bullying counties, bullying everybody. So, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, but we shouldn't apply that rule, but it is, in fact, so let's not be hypocritical. Somebody said rules don't apply, and again, let's not be hypocritical. And then Abigail Spanberry said at the debate about Mr. Jones, "Let the election make the decision." Thank you.
Ms. Trudnik.
I want to take a moment to say thank you. Thank you to everyone who has reached out over the past couple of weeks for your kind words, prayers, and encouragement. Your support has meant more to me than I can fully express. I have never experienced such hatred, unkind, harsh behavior from anyone till I became an elected official. In no other job have I worked and been treated so unprofessionally by coworkers. I've never had my race, political beliefs, or strongly-held religious beliefs questioned so harshly. All from the very people who call themselves "the tolerant left," "the love-everyone left." We should be able to have civil discourse and discussion that doesn't bring about anger and attacks. We should model behavior for the very students we were elected to serve. We should hold ourselves to higher behavior standards than we hold them to. This week, I had a conversation with my dad that reminded me of something important. He told me that he has full confidence in me, in my strength, my calling, and my purpose. He reminded me that I'm exactly where I'm meant to be, doing the work I was called and elected to do. God has placed me here in this time and place for a reason. Sometimes in difficult seasons, that's exactly what we need, to be reminded of who we are, why we're here, and who we ultimately serve. We are not called to live in fear, but to be bold in our faith, our convictions, and our responsibilities. Colossians 3:23 says, "Whatever you do, work heartily as for the Lord and not for men." That's the posture I will continue to carry forward. I will keep doing the job that you elected me to do. Thank you.
Mr. Wilk.
I wanted, first, my condolences go out to the King family. Candy, Delegate Candy Mundan King, and Josh King are my constituents. They live in Swans Creek, which is where I reside, and their children have gone through my schools. So this tragic passing of their daughter, who, as we mentioned, Ms. Grover mentioned earlier, is a student, was a student at Colgan High School, my heart goes out to them. It was a beautiful memorial service today for the family, and they're in my prayers. They're really good people, passionate, dedicated people to our community, and my heart is with them. I think that's, oh, I really, oh, yeah. This month is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. For many families like mine, definitely it impacted. My wife was diagnosed over a year ago. She is in remission now, but this is a very important month, because so many people have family or loved ones that have been impacted by breast cancer. So I'm thinking pink, and just want to, you know, again, express my love and support for all those people who are battling it, or know someone that has battled it, or sadly has passed as a result of breast cancer. And I'm just going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Mr. Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to just, also give just my condolences to Josh King and Candy King for their daughter. I just can't even imagine, because it's like I have a 15-year-old sophomore as well, just like they do. So it's just unimaginable for a parent, and the strength they showed today was really admirable, and we all can learn from that. But it's been another busy couple of weeks across Prince William County and in the Neapsco District, and I just want to highlight a few moments that really capture who we are as a community. As Ms. Williams mentioned earlier, we had the ribbon-cutting for the Prince William County Crisis Receiving Center, and that facility represents what happens when you take politics out of the equation and you do what's right for people. For too long, our jails and our emergency rooms have been our default responses for mental health crisis, and that's never been, that's never been a right fit. This center changes that story, and now when someone is in crisis, they can get the help in a space that's built for healing and not for punishment. And our law enforcement officers can get back to serving the community instead of waiting hours in the ER. It's a game changer for public safety, for families, and for dignity. Then on Friday, I was able to attend the Paraded Nations at Dell City Elementary, and they took that celebration outside, out back in the field. It was beautiful. Students, families, staff filled the space with colors, music, and pride, kids waving the flags that represented their Hispanic heritage and culture from around the world. That's what makes Prince William County and the Neapsco District so special. Our diversity isn't something we just talk about, it's something we celebrate together. Huge thanks to Principal Slater and the entire Dell City team for making that event so meaningful. And then also last week, we had our joint meeting with the Board of County Supervisors. It was a great example of collaboration done right. We covered a wide range of topics, funded priorities, the impact of federal worker layoffs, potential governments, or not potential, but the government shutdown and enrollment trends, to name a few. But it was serious work, and it showed that when we come together at the table with open minds and shared goals, we can make smart, forward-looking decisions for our community. And of course, I have to give some love to the Garfield, to the Garfield High School. The Red Wolves football team has been on the road these past couple of weeks, knocking off Colgan and Potomac back-to-back. Colgan, before, was undefeated, before that game, but not anymore. And I love seeing the school pride and competitive spirit come alive on Friday nights. Keep it going, Red Wolves. And before I close, I would just want to say this. I respect everyone's opinion. I truly believe that every voice and perspective matters. That's how we learn, grow, and build stronger communities. But there is an important difference between welcoming diverse viewpoints and giving space to movements or messages that work against the values of inclusion, respect, and truth. Public education should be a place where all students feel seen, supported, and safe, not where politics or division takes center stage. We can debate ideas all day, but at the end of it, our focus has to stay on what's best for kids and keeping our schools places of belonging for everybody. That's all from the Neapsco District, where community, collaboration, and commitment are always a focus. Thank you.
My deepest condolences to the King family on their loss of their daughter. We are truly saddened by the loss, and, you know, we wish them healing in this time that's really going to be tough for them. I've served seven years on the school board, very proud of the work we've done here. I think most proud of this past strategic plan, that I think the fingerprints of every single member on this dais has had a say in, or most of us have had a say in, the strategic planning, the strategic planning next time. I think my fingerprints are all over it, so whatever you don't like about the schools, you can blame me, and whatever you like about the schools, you can blame me. I've been called sort of everything in the book over the last seven years, and having run for even higher office, I think I've seen, if you just scroll online, you can see Communist, terrorist, my favorite Che Guevara acolyte, I've seen, you know, the far-left not happy with me, the far-right not happy with me during the pandemic. I, you know, I think I achieved a notoriety on both sides of folks disliking me at the highest levels, and from every aspect of the school division. And in politics, it is really tough, but I've also seen when we do get along, when we do work together, we're able to do great things. Chair Wheeler, who was the Board of County Supervisor Chair, implemented and did some great things to improve funding for schools. Luke Torian, the Chair of House Appropriations, singly the most powerful member in the Commonwealth when it comes to dollars, really helped us out here with schools. I've worked with folks on both sides of the aisle, whether they're Board of County Supervisors, whether they're on this board, whether they're on General Assembly or in federal government. And I've been, you know, accused of sort of, you know, why would you work with those folks? And I work with them because it leads to great success. We are a school division that has one of the highest graduations rates we've ever had, the highest-paid first-year teachers in the Commonwealth of Virginia, one of the highest salaries of teachers around the nation. We have worked hard to improve student performance coming out of the pandemic. We are a school division that Forbes Magazine ranks as one of the top divisions to work for by our employees. We have We have opportunities that we have created for everybody in the school division, every race, every color, every, you know, the diversity. We have worked really hard for that. And so I work really hard to do that. And I work through the sort of constant assaults and attacks that, and you've heard from board members who've seen it as well. It is disappointing when we can't get along. It is disappointing when we don't work well together. It's disappointing when we see that at the federal level with our federal officers. It's disappointing when we see that locally. It's disappointing when I see that here on my own board. I am hopeful that this school board will continue to work well together because the students who we represent here and the ones we work hard for are the ones we're doing all this for. Many of us have kids still in the school division, and that's what we work for. And I'm committed to working with everyone on this school board, no matter what their viewpoints are. And I will continue to do it in a civilized, collegial, and comprehensive way that gets us to the ends we need. Thank you. This meeting's adjourned.